Good evening. I am the Vice Chair of the City of Saginaw Planning Commission. This is a regular meeting of the City Planning Commission. When the petition, special land use or site plan approval request in which you are interested is called, please come forward to the podium. Give your name and address to the Secretary for the Record. After the appellant's presentation, others may comment. The meeting is videotaped. It is important that only one person speak at a time, and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, special land use or site plan approval. Recommendations on all petitions made by the Commission are then forwarded to City Council.
Sure.
Are there any questions?
Okay.
If there are none, the Secretary will call roll on the first item of business.
All right. Jim Doan, excused. Bob Hanley?
Here.
Yolanda Jones?
Here.
Lloyd Clock?
Here.
Brenda Moore?
Yeah.
Jim Nightingale?
Present.
Jack Nash?
Present.
Tom Brayley?
Present.
Brad Zwerko?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Our first item of business is the approval of minutes from September 24th, 2019. If everybody's had enough opportunity to review those, are there any questions or concerns regarding those minutes?
Moved to approve.
Seconded.
Minutes from September are approved. Thank you. Pardon me. Pardon me. For the approval of minutes from September 24th, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next order of business is the approval of this evening's agenda.
Moved to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now on to new business would be Case J-19-0026, site plan approval for 218 South Washington Avenue. And at this point, we will turn the floor over to anyone that would like to present.
My name's Nick Seofer, Architect, Machine Development, 1100 South Washington Street, Saginaw, Michigan. I'm here to present our proposed new mixed-use building located on 218, which we're going to call 218 because it's actually four addresses, which we have combined, we're going to stick with the 218. It's a mixed-use facility located along Washington, right around the Spicer, Wally's, that's that vacant lot right in between those two. What we're proposing to build there is a three-story mixed-use with the first floor being a leased space for office. We're looking at professional office, financial-type office space, and the upper two floors would actually have apartments above them. It's a three-story wood and masonry-framed building. We're looking at brick and stone veneer, and if you notice on the elevations, there's a little special square on the corner of the building. What we're proposing to do is salvage, we salvaged some very nice concrete medallions when we were tearing down the site for Michigan Works. We salvaged those, and we're proposing to actually reinstall those downtown. It's kind of a good thing we salvage things off old buildings. The first floor is aluminum-framed windows, kind of your standard storefront systems, insulated glazing, and then residential-style windows above, kind of fitting the style of the building itself. I don't, do you want me to go through the zoning on this, Cassie? Or?
No.
I mean, as you can see, it's very well-used of a very small site. We got just about enough parking in there with some refuse pickup and some green space that we think will be very nice as well, considering I think that's been a stolen lot for quite a while. The Mayor and I had a brief conversation about an idea that I would be willing to talk about. We were talking about possibly altering the site plan just slightly and moving that building back five feet from the road and using up that little bit of green space we have on the back where we currently have bicycle parking so that we can create more of a frontage along Washington. And we are willing to take that back as an advisement and see if that is something that we think is feasible and would start kind of changing that feel along Washington. I mean, I'm all for it. I'm more of a walkable city. I've been, had the pleasure of working in Uptown for many years now and downtown Midland, and those are all walkable communities. It is definitely the way to be going.
And the zoning ordinance does allow for up to 10 feet of it being set back as long as that space is activated in some way.
But if you were to do that, talk about that and what we approve or don't approve today. How do we know what was really approved or not approved?
Either way, they have to, they would have to resubmit the plans, and then I could bring, I could share them with you all.
Okay.
So it would be?
It would be in a condition of order form.
A resubmitted site plan that would talk to the step-back and then the frontage that would be there that isn't there now?
Correct.
Which would create more parking?
No, we would use that front space for more of a resident, you know, more of a pedestrian use.
Okay.
Be it maybe some plantings or some, maybe introducing some green space again along Washington there.
What I would probably suggest would be a motion to approve the plan as proposed, but with the alternative, they can come back with a plan to the altered plan as well. They can do either one.
It in no way affects the site engineering.
We can't, we can't commit them at this point to doing that. But I'm saying they have to come back if they change this. Right, if they change it. If they change this, they gotta come back.
So approval to change, basically.
Well, you know, I guess the whole deal is you have to approve the plan, and then he comes back and says, oh gee, we're going to use that setback. You can't go and say, well, we're going to approve it, and then you were going to make it an alternate deal.
Well, we can, we can leave that as an option for them to investigate, is what I'm...
You know my feeling.
We originally, we originally were going to try to build this year, but that window was pretty much shut. So, I mean, for us to take a little extra time during the winter to resubmit, I mean, once we've had a chance to discuss it in-house. But I would like to make sure that everything else is good. If it's just a really small change, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, what is your timeframe?
We, now we're aiming for spring build.
Okay, spring build.
I don't think we're going to get in, through the building department, through this department, and we still have a variance request up next week, and then just to get permits and stuff in place, I think we're going to miss the, the frost is going to get us.
Sure.
Well, I'd make a motion that we approve the plans with the authorization to come back with modified one as you proposed.
Yeah, if we, if we so choose to alter, we'll come back.
Well, I don't want to go into a motion right now. I want to go into a discussion, and my whole discussion on this is, is that why have them come back? Why don't you just go and approve it with that five-foot setback and be done?
And then if they come back?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that makes sense. Well, I mean, we can do that too, I guess. He can come back if...
So are we denying it without the five-foot setback? Are you saying that?
Yeah, I don't think we should do that.
Right.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. I said, let's, let's go and put that setback in there and alter this right now and say, you know what?
Well, he can't, he can't confirm that he can do that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the final decision-making on this. So if we could, if we just review this and if we so choose to make the change, we'll come back.
So let's say you don't make the change, then we're right to where you are.
Then you guys are, I'm still meeting your zoning.
How's the committee feel about that, I guess?
I think that's the way we have to do it.
You're right.
I mean, we have to, either we approve or reject the current plan right now.
Right.
With, and they, and it can certainly have the provision they can come back if they choose. That's all.
Well, they will come back if there's nothing changed.
If we reject the current plan, they will come back with the altered plan, will they not? Or maybe not?
They don't have to, they can go.
They can decide not to build the building, which I think, okay.
We don't want to do that.
Either way, we would like to get the building. But I just can't commit to that, and my boss is currently not available.
You know, I think we have to go by this.
Right. What's on paper?
The motion was to approve the plan. But we haven't, we're not there yet.
No, we're not.
We're not. All right, okay, you got more?
Yeah.
Let's discuss it. That's what I was looking for.
So Jack, what are we going to discuss?
Well, we have to go into close first after, after we're done with the public. We have to go into close.
Okay.
Is this, you're treating as a hearing then? No, that's the regular way of going.
Yeah, usually the public comment is done, and then you guys have your discussion.
This is the public thing, they gotta go into close.
I can answer any more questions you may have, that's for sure.
We're not there yet.
Yeah, we don't jump to approve it yet without discussing it all.
Are there any other questions for Nick?
You, Robert? Good.
I'm not going anywhere, so.
Are you not going to?
Jim?
I'll stay.
Good.
I'm fine, I'm fine.
Brad? Nick mentioned it, but they will have to go before the Board of Appeals on zoning. They will be going before them next Wednesday, or this, yeah, I guess not tomorrow, so the weekend, the week after that, because the zoning ordinance does call for all buildings to have 85% build to frontage along the front, along the primary street, but in order to have the driveway, they will have to have a decrease in that.
So that's an exception to the rule?
Yes. But the only other way that they could have access to a parking lot in the back, which the zoning code calls for, is for them to get an easement from private, three private properties that lead out, because there is an alleyway from federal.
Okay. What's the probability of that?
Let's talk.
In order to meet your 85% on a small site is absolutely almost impossible, unless the city is set up with a grid system of accessible alleys, which this block is not. That's the only way that really works. It would be really difficult for this building to be successful if you were trying to tell patrons that they had to go right on this street, left on this street, go up that alley that has a do-not-enter barricade, it's open, but it's there. It would not make the project feasible at that time.
This is, this is a question for staff about what year were most of those buildings built?
Uh, I can look that up.
Because it's a situation where the buildings were built when they didn't have cars.
Right. It's very tight back there.
Yeah, not too many of them. I think, I think we're looking at 1900s.
Apparently horse and buggies back there.
Horse and buggies. There's our pictures of horses and buggies in front of that building.
So back to your point, with the setback, it would prevent maybe a car from being able to clear a reasonable space, is that what you're saying?
No.
No, I don't think so. Alls I wanted to do was clarify that. Your frontage coverage provision in that, in that ordinance is very restrictive. It makes it so that if you don't have a very large site, and even if you do have a large site, you are really restricting access unless you have sides. If, if, if we had a corner lot, it would be very feasible. But when you are in what we call a postage-stamped lot in the middle of a block, it is very restrictive, and that's why we're asking for the variance request.
Or if you were using parking somewhere else that you weren't putting in your own parking lot.
Correct.
Which is good that you guys are putting in your own.
Well, you won't need to come back with, assuming the zoning gives the variance, that's separate from what we're doing, you don't need to.
Correct. I would imagine your approval would have to be contingent that I get the variance request next week.
Okay.
I'm hoping I get it next week. And I think our other item in there, Cassie, was we have a small, we are two parking spaces, three parking spaces short, other required, but we are accessing the on-street parking to satisfy that, those other three spaces, which we are allowed by the variance as well. I mean...
Four parking spaces, but yeah.
Yeah, four.
Yes. And they did, the email conversation with Floyd, he did find something that for the bike parking, that is what, the 10% can decrease. It can decrease it by 10%, which would only be 1.9. But with the street parking right in front, and the street parking, or the, the other parking can be within 300 feet, so there's plenty.
I have a question. Has engineering reviewed the site plans at all?
They have had them, they haven't given back their comments, so that would have to be a contingent on them approving them. I did find the building that holds Dawn of a New Day was built in 1884, if this is correct.
Yeah, that's what I said. They didn't have cars.
Pretty, pretty long time ago.
Toy ones, maybe, no?
It was a Vision though, back then, yeah, that they would have cars.
I think they had a street car.
I don't know about you, but I don't remember 1884, so.
Any other questions?
No. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, prior to Commission discussion, we will close the public portion of the hearing out.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
I have one more question.
Yes, you can.
What's your expected completion date?
I do believe November-ish of next year, 2020, assuming we get going March. It's a small building, it's 2,500 square foot per floor, so.
So six months, let me do it for you.
Six to eight months is what we're looking at for a building.
Okay.
Depending on how harsh our winter is.
It's going to be a bad one.
It's going to be harsh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Are there any other comments or questions? Last call for public comments or questions. Public portion of this hearing is now closed, open to discussion through the Commission.
I defer to Commissioner Nash.
We have to say, we have to make a motion to approve it, then go to discussion?
Right.
Yep.
Well, I thought we would, we would do the discussion first, prior to approval.
Doesn't go, which one goes first?
So you just have the motion and the second, and then discussion, and then vote?
Yeah, go to discussion. I'm going to...
Okay, so we now need a motion for approval?
I will assert a motion to approve Site Plan J-19-0026, and with a completion date of 11/20, and the final approval after staff reviews and engineering has their input on the final.
Zoning.
And zoning, yeah. And zoning has her final approval and write-offs.
Support.
Okay, now discussion. Okay, go ahead.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, discussion, pardon me, okay. Thank, thank you. Now we are open for discussion.
That's it. That's it. You're in a situation, I think there'd be a little more discussion at zoning next week.
Right.
Because of the parking situation and the number of spaces they need in the building, but basically, this is a new building in an old, old lot that was not built, was, intention was not to even have cars. It needs to, you know, it's landlocked, and I see no problem.
Yeah, and you know, the only concern I had, and I'm glad we clarified the date that you're going to complete this, is because much as you start digging or doing anything there, you don't know what you're going to find underneath the ground, you know?
Exactly.
Yeah, I know, I've looked at the history of that, there's four plots there. One company base puts up on.
Right, what you have to go and tear out to build.
The chance you take to build in the middle of town.
Which issues are going to the zoning board then?
Just the build-to requirement.
The build-to?
The parking can be approved by Planning Commission.
Parking can be?
In this, because it's in the Riverfront mixed-use district, so the new zoning allows that.
So just the build-to goes to zoning?
Any other questions, comments?
I would, just a comment, due to this, after I thought about something downtown, is remember the problem they ran into when they did Michigan Works, what they had, they ran into some structural issues. I would give them at least nine months to the end of the year, to 2/21, if you could.
Amended to completion date of January 1st of 2021.
Support.
They dropped their replacement school, we found that site. And steam tunnels?
You'd ever know.
That was my first project, Machine Development.
Yeah. Good.
Anything else? I'm good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Case J-19-0026 has been approved based on contingency. Next order of business, other development updates. Cassie?
Hold on one second. Um, there are a couple things coming through right now. I want to make sure it's spelled Zwerko right.
You don't have it spelled right here, so whatever you...
I don't?
No.
Oh, I did not create that.
I know you didn't, but it's okay.
I'll be leaving a new one printed.
I've got a spell check for that.
Um, so the YMCA has started a fund to build a pavilion on the Greenway right outside of their property, so that will be kind of the Riverfront, that grassy area, which I have heard, that is considered still pot-off park, or if that has changed into something else by the time you get all the way down there, but they are working with DNM's site and have submitted plans for a pavilion. The St. Mary's Hospital's plans are still going through. They are doing an expansion of their emergency room center. That did not have to come before this board because it was less than 15% of their total square footage of their building. They're going to be going before council on Monday, I believe, with an easement, so part of their property has vacated streets on it with sewer and water underneath, and so in order for them to build out, they have to move those. So they're going to modify the easement to push it out so that they can dig that stuff up, move it, and then build the emergency center out of that. So, expensive project. They do have plans in the future that they haven't totally shared, but moving that easement and moving all of the underwater works, or underground facilities will allow them to expand again in the future, which will be great.
I apologize, but I was signing, I missed who was doing that?
St. Mary's.
It is the St. Mary's Emergency, that's right.
Yep, so they're expanding the whole front of the, and I can share the planes with you guys.
I'm familiar with where, but I just, I didn't know, I hadn't heard St. Mary's, I just wanted to confirm.
What is that, $18 million project?
Something.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, it's crazy. So they're actually, so they're expanding the whole front of the emergency room, and then they're also adding new ambulance bays.
Right.
So that the ambulances will be covered, and they're kind of reworking the circulation on the site so that ambulances will have their own entrance and exit, so that they, right now, I guess it's a mess over there, and they, there's cars that drive across the area that ambulances drive in, and so we'll totally have separate parking from the driveways from where the pedestrian move, and it'll... They have big plans. They've already done about $50 million worth of interior upgrades and technology and things, and then this, and then in the future, they have another large project planned, so. Between them and Covenant, there's a lot of money going into Saginaw.
$80 million.
Yeah.
Just make sure we have people that can work the construction trades to do it.
I know. Yeah. So that's all I have for those.
Marijuana. What can you tell us about marijuana?
Um, I don't have any updates about the marijuana situation as of right now. There has been a task force kind of created that is, and I don't, are you on this, Yolanda? I know that Tim Morales, City Manager, and then Amy Lusk, the City Attorney, and I don't know Floyd, if you're on this, or Brenda?
What? No, I'm not. Brenda and I are the liaisons with council for that group. The manager's created his own staff group to work on appropriate ordinances in the event council chooses to opt-in.
Right, which they have yet to do.
Right.
The council adopted a one-year moratorium, essentially.
Right. So that year, in that year, that group is going to be doing research and then providing examples and things of ordinances that potentially the city could adopt, and then drafting one up.
So a question, if the feds approve this marijuana bill that's in the House, it's going to go to the Senate, may or may not pass, but does that give the, I guess, a local government the reason to just do it? Or could they still say, no, we don't want it?
I would think that you can still say no. I'm not an expert. I don't know if you guys know more, Floyd, but...
We would be acting under state law, and we could still choose to opt-out.
Okay.
But at this point, we expect the January 20th, is it 20th, 20?
24th.
24th, Friday, the 24th, the strategic, or the strategic planning session, we expect to get a full update from the manager's group.
And that is open to the public, and everybody will be invited to that from this board, for sure.
And just to mention, that meeting is going to be, you'll be getting an invitation because it's required by the RRC for the Planning Commission, DDA Riverfront, the other commissions to be there to be a part of that whole discussion.
So for the record, the county and the city have opted out up to this point, even though it's state-approved, right?
County didn't.
I thought they did.
At that large of a government entity, they don't, yeah, it's all for the local.
It's the municipalities, townships and cities.
I meant, you know what I meant? I meant the township.
Oh, yes.
Saying the township in the city.
The township has.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, another update that isn't necessarily development, if all of you are familiar with the city's marketing campaign, hopefully you are. I'm not sure that I brought in the This Is Saginaw video. I should plan on, I'll plan on bringing that in. But the city is working with Saginaw Future, we've both been a partner in the DDA, in continuing to push out positive messages and things of that nature, so we're going through different types of media to inform people, you know, to help change the perception of the City of Saginaw. And we, the city at the last, was it the last council meeting approved the radio?
Yes.
Okay, so the city is entering into a contract with Cumulus Radio, and so we will start to have commercials in the second and fourth week of December, so listen out for those, just simple, you know, happy, welcome, pulling out the branding campaign that we're working on, that's we build opportunity, excitement, community, but also saying, you know, happy holidays from the City of Saginaw. So that's really going to be the kickoff of that, and then they have approved in the budget to do marketing every month for the first six months, or seven months, I guess, December through June, so you'll continuously hear those every month, so, but it will change up.
So this is called, what is the marketing campaign called? Pure Saginaw?
We've been calling it This Is Saginaw, or We Build?
This Is Saginaw?
This Is Saginaw, We Build.
This Is We Build, yes.
Then the tagline can change, we build opportunity, we build...
Community, entertainment.
Excellence, we, you know.
Kind of like the SVSU, we, whatever it could be.
This is also available to businesses to use.
Okay.
Interesting.
We show movies.
Brenda?
Yolanda, I have a question. You haven't started advertising, because I was just in San Antonio with the National Leagues of Cities, and I had people approach me about Saginaw's new, Saginaw's new motto, and I'm like, okay, some people from Alabama, I had some California people came up.
It's on Facebook?
Yeah, Facebook.
Oh, is it?
It's on Facebook, it's on YouTube. So we have been advertising, we just haven't, like, used the conventional method of...
So search City of Saginaw on Facebook, and it comes up with all these...
It will come up, yeah.
We've been using it a lot on Facebook, the DDA and the City of Saginaw, and Riverfront Saginaw, we're using different hashtags.
Good point. Saginaw, Michigan, not Saginaw, Texas.
Right, Saginaw, Michigan, yeah, so we use hashtag Saginaw and hashtag Saginaw, Michigan. Also, the DDA gives out new business welcome baskets, so...
This Is Saginaw, yep.
Yep, that has the swag that we've been handing out, and then counselors, council members, counselors, have been handing out a lot of the different swag items at different events and things as well. So radio is kind of that next step, and then, oh, it's also on the digital billboard about the, my building, 505?
Yep, 515, yeah.
Another, another thing is that we've been, had various presentations about it, so we've, we were at Delta College, so we've been, we've been rolling it out this whole summer.
Yep. Tom, we would love if you showed it at the Court Street Theater before video.
All you got to do is create a 15-second blurb, and we'll put it in before the movie starts. Easy to do.
We can, we can take care of that.
Got that done? We've been talking to...
We can take care of it, we've been working on this.
We don't have it on.
Oh, yeah.
Also, we've been talking, Craig... We've been talking...Craig Goslin gave us the okay that he would be showing it every so often. I'm not sure what...how often, but at the Spirit Games.
Sure.
The video, and then I also want...yeah, we're looking for any...especially free that we could do.
Right.
Free is good.
But we are spending money, obviously, the radio costs money, buying all the merchandise costs money. We're looking into more contracts. So, go ahead.
Well, we've been...actually been working on this for some time, so when we became redevelopment-ready certified, marketing was one of our biggest areas, so we've allocated funding from our general fund, as well as working with the Downtown Development Authority to pay for it. But there's other mechanisms available for us to pursue, to start funding some of these activities. This is our base year, so we'll know pretty much during the course of our budget process how much it's going to cost us for the next year.
So be in an opportunity zone right down through here? Is there, like, money for things like that, through something like that, that channel, or not?
I wouldn't say so much an opportunity zone, but you do have, like, there's...you can do a millage for economic development, and it is for marketing.
Yeah.
But we haven't pursued that yet, but we're looking at every alternative that's available. Yeah, but I mean, people actually, you know, want to, you know, donate towards the activity, so we're looking at alternative resources to fund it.
Okay, next item of business, master plan update and discussion.
So this is where I wanted to introduce you all to Bob Gouine. He is the new urban planner for the City of Saginaw. He's taking...well, I'm not sure exactly when Mike is retiring, pretty soon, I don't know if you know.
Sixteen days and two hours.
So...
That's what he told me to do.
You're counting it down, or Mike is?
No, he told me that.
So I want you to give a brief little introduction of yourself?
Sure. I've started out in planning back when I graduated from college, and then evolved into doing economic development in various communities. Came back to the family business in Mongru. We sold that business, and I worked for Pumper Construction for about five years. Started my own business in Caststone. Caststone is identified on this building that you just approved, that's an example.
Oh, okay.
And then most recently owned a twenty-unit apartment building, sold that, and here I am.
So he's well-versed in a lot of different aspects, which will be really great. You guys are not losing me, from what I know. I'm going to continue to manage a lot of the day-to-day projects that come in and run this board, the Board of Appeals on Zoning, and the Historic District Commission. Bob is really going to be kind of the leader in the future vision, so with this master planning update, and then updating some of the other things that really Mike Faust and myself having a time as we're trying to keep the wheels greased on all the day-to-day activities.
So just...I think you misspoke yourself.
What?
So are you going to do planning or zoning?
I'm doing both.
Okay, but you said...okay.
Oh, I said "or"?
No, you just said ZB...you just said zoning, zoning, planning.
Oh, well, I'm doing the planning board and the Board of Appeals on Zoning, and I do the Historic District Commission. We'll see how we can...we're kind of lucky that it's pretty open for us to kind of figure out how it works best for us. But yeah, the next step...I have done updates on the master plan a couple times. You know, I kind of said that we were waiting for...to fill this position, so that we would have somebody there to be involved the entire time in this master plan update. So now that we do have Bob, now is Thanksgiving, and then it will be Christmas, so it might be in the planning process to get our focus group meetings together, so that we can bring together the educational partners, the hospitals, business leaders, all of our boards and commissions, to give their thoughts and ideas and concern for the master plan as we're moving forward so that we can find out where we have...what we have accomplished since the last time, and what we still need to work out, and also what our new goals should be. So that's kind of where we're at with that. Hopefully, after the new year, we'll be starting these focus group meetings. It'd be nice to have the strategic planning, maybe we'll have a couple things to pull from that as well. But one of the other things we need to do right now is vote to extend the completion date, because right now it is in December of twenty nineteen, which it is not going to be done in December of twenty nineteen. So I'd like to extend it to December of twenty twenty. I think that that would be doable. We may have to extend it a little longer, but hopefully, if we have that deadline, I think we could make it.
Legally, how long can you extend it, or just can you continue and extend it?
I'm not sure if there is a legal...
I don't think there's a legal limit.
It's supposed to be updated every five years, so we're way beyond where it was supposed to be.
Right.
So what was your extension date, Cassie?
Uh, December, we could do December first, twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Extension?
Granted.
Granted.
And just let the board know that this will go to city council for their approval.
Yep.
So can we ask Bob a question?
Sure.
So Bob, with your extensive background in many fields, you see Saginaw where it is today, and you've seen cities that have come from where we are to where they ended up. What's a good example of where we could be based on an existing success story? Any ideas?
I don't know if I can come up with any examples. I can just tell you anecdotally that from my perspective, not living in the city, but working within the city, and even just going around and speaking to people and staff and every...I see a lot of optimism. I mean, truly, a lot of optimism, so.
All right. Sure enough. Not to put you on the spot, because I did.
Well, I mean...
Yeah, throw a curveball at him.
I think the master plan is focusing on the riverfront, and there are many communities, examples of where they've used the riverfront as an anchor, and...
Well, I just look at our Ojibwe Island, and I look at our riverfront, and I see Bay City doing great things, and other cities of similar size, and, you know, I just think we're underachieving, is all I'm saying. I really do.
I think we're underutilized a river.
Yep.
That's a big asset.
You got it, absolutely.
A free asset that's there.
You got it. Thank you, Bob. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We expect results immediately.
So I said to her, "A deadline, gun to my head".
Commissioner Brayley, he said he was a city planner, not a fortune teller.
He doesn't have a magic wand either.
Is there a little bit of that inside of that?
Next item of business would be public comment. Is there any additional public comment this evening?
They're packed house.
Do we have any additional public comment? If there is no further public comment, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?